SR 520 Bridge Demolition. And I need someone to move to authorize the city manager to file a lawsuit or appeal in Superior Court and/or U.S. District Court challenging the SR 520 I-5 to Medina Bridge Replacement and HOV Project NEPA/SEPA Environmental Reevaluation Floating Bridge Demolition issued by the FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration, and WARTDOT, and challenging the failure of the Federal Highway Administration and WARTDOT to comply with applicable NEPA and SEPA laws and regulations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor? We'd like clarification for the record. I think I heard you say that we're in executive session still. Maybe if the record could be clarified-
Well, we haven't adjourned from an executive session because we had action to take, right?
No, but what we're supposed to do is you are coming out of executive session and now we're in regular meeting.
So we are coming out of executive session and we're making this motion.
Thank you.
And it's been moved and seconded. And so is there for any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Six zero.
And we also need another motion to move to authorize the city attorney to file in King County Superior Court a lawsuit against property owner Oliver Boots for timber trespass and nuisance, together with a prejudgment writ of attachment, and ratify and confirm any actions. I'm not making out this word, Mr. Attorney.
Consistent with this motion.
Consistent with the motion. Yeah, with the motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Six zero.
All right. With that, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Councilmember Sperry?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Mayor Baker?
Present.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Viness?
Excused.
Thank you.
If I could get you to stand, and even though Dr. Mendry came in, if Mr. Mendry, you'd be so kind as to lead us in the flag suit. I would really appreciate it. We haven't seen you in a while.
(inaudible)
Next item then on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections or modifications, the agenda will stand as written. Next item then is a presentation, Sound Transit 3 presentation PowerPoint and yeah. Mrs. Overlyce.
Thank you. Is that what you were expecting?
Uh, it's a PDF.
Okay. And I can just pull because I don't know. Yeah, let's see. So where's the presentation mode, do you know? Or just make it big. Ha ha. And then if it's up, it's on. Good evening, Mayor Baker and Council. I am very pleased to introduce Kathy Liotta with Sound Transit. And we've been working with her for quite some time now in creating the Sound Transit 3 package. And we're thrilled to have her here. It's been fun getting to know her. And really, the show is all hers. I just offered to come up and introduce her. And thank you for being here, and I'll let you take it away.
Okay. Good evening and thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Kathy Liotta, and I'm a Senior Transportation Planner with Sound Transit. For the past month or so, we've been out throughout the region to many city council meetings such as this, open houses, and sharing with the region as a whole the draft ST 3 plan that our board asked us to get input on throughout the region. So it's been a very exciting time with our population in the region booming, the economy booming, and our congested roadways. There's been a tremendous amount of interest throughout the region in the next set of high-capacity transit investments that are being proposed. Okay, so this map shows, as a reminder, the Sound Transit District. We are within the most populated areas of three counties, over about 50, we have 52 cities within the district, more than 1,000 square miles, about 3 million people, which is almost 40% of the entire state population. The services we provide are sounder commuter rail, Link Light rail, and regional express bus services, you're familiar, on the SR 522 corridor. Next slide. Just very briefly, you may have been aware that in March, we had two really important light rail stations open. They've had tremendous ridership, that's at Husky Stadium and on Capitol Hill, so that was a very exciting event. Next slide. So we have had ridership increases on our system for about the past 14 years, and we expect that to continue as we have more stations opening over the next seven years. Next slide. So here, this slide briefly lists what's coming online over the next several years. Again, the University Link Extension just opened. We're having another light rail station open just south of Sea-Tac in the fall. North Gate Link Extension will open in 2021, and that will include three stations. The Tacoma Link Expansion is expected to open in 2022. And then 2023 is a really a very big year for us. We have several extensions opening, including the Linwood Link Extension, which will include four light rail stations, including the station at I-5 and 145th, which is critical to one of the ST 3 projects that I'm sure you're familiar with and I'll talk about momentarily. So that, so once those projects are completed, then where do we go from there? So this current process we're in started a few years ago when the Puget Sound Regional Council came out with the information that by the year 2040, we're going to have about a million more people in the region. And given that our road space is limited, that our Sound Transit Board started to really think in earnest, what should be the next set of high-capacity transit investments to be able to help keep people moving around in the year 2041 when we have so many more people in the region? So very briefly, over the last several years, we updated our long-range plan, we obtained revenue authority from the state legislature so that we can go to the ballot and ask people if they would like to pay more in taxes to increase the high-capacity transit system. And right now, we're in the middle of, not really the middle, actually getting toward the tail end of developing our system plan. And the ballot measure we expect will be put before the voters in November. So with the draft system plan that I'm going to go over very briefly with you, our board has proposed a very ambitious 25-year program of investments to improve our quality of life, the economy, and our environment. As many of you may know, our region and our region is years or even decades behind many other cities, regions throughout the U.S. in terms of investments in high-capacity transits. So that said, if the draft plan as is, once it's built out, we would have a complete system with 112 miles of light rail throughout the region, which then would put our system on par with other cities such as Washington, D.C., San Francisco's BART system, Chicago's CTA system. So now to get into what's actually included within the draft plan. First, we include some early deliverable projects, and a lot, most of these are related to bus transit and supporting bus infrastructure. These are intended to provide some relief to the region while these longer-term, very capital-intensive light rail projects are in project development. So included in some of the early deliverable projects are the parking along the SR 522 corridor, so here in Kenmore, as well as in Lake Forest Park and Bothell. Next slide, please. Oh. Oh, yes, light rail. No, no, that was right. Okay, it was just mixed up. So in terms of light rail investments in the plan, the draft plan includes 58 miles of light rail extension. So this would be extending light rail all the way to Everett at the north, all the way to Tacoma in the south, extending light rail from the Overlake area to downtown Redmond. Within the city of Seattle, it would be extending light rail from Ballard to downtown, including a second, a new light rail tunnel through downtown, and also light rail to West Seattle. We'd also include light rail from Bellevue to Issaquah, and an additional extension of the Tacoma Link project. And then the Bus Rapid Transit and Sound Transit Express projects included within the plan. On I-405, we include Bus Rapid Transit from Linwood to, all the way to Bellevue, and then around to Burien. And then project you're probably most familiar with, BRT along SR 522 and northeast 145th. So if we go on the next slide, I'll talk a little bit more about that. One thing I do want to give your city a, you know, compliment your city and the other cities along the north end of Lake Washington because you, the cities really came together in a very powerful way and a very consistent manner in terms of advocating for what the cities along the north end of Lake Washington wanted. And I think it was really very well received by the board members. So just want to say you guys did a great job with your coordination and organization there. So the BRT project would connect the communities along the north, north end of Lake Washington, Woodinville, Bothell, Kenmore, and Lake, and Kenmore, Lake Forest Park, and Shoreline to the Link Light rail station that will be opening at I-5 and 145th. Along 145th, we include two BRT, two BRT station pairs and bus lanes or queue jumps at specific locations along that corridor to enable buses to more easily get through the corridor. And then along SR 522, the project would complete the missing gaps in the business-access transit lanes along the corridor. Along, we also include seven BRT station pairs along 522, as well as an enhanced transit center at UW-Bothell. BRT service along this corridor would be every 10 minutes throughout the day from Shoreline to UW-Bothell. Right now, in the, in the plan, we have service continuing east from UW-Bothell to Woodinville less frequently at every 20 minutes. And also, in that segment between UW-Bothell and Woodinville, there are no capital improvements. It's just extending the service. And I think I mentioned this briefly, but we also include three parking garages, each of 300 stalls, along the 522 corridor. Very briefly, the plan also includes extension of sounder service from Lakewood to DuPont, as well as some capital improvements. And then next slide is, and finally, although the ST 3 plan is a very bold and ambitious program, we know it's not going to solve all of the region's long-term transit challenges. So the plan does include some additional studies to look at what the next set of high-capacity transit investments might be beyond the ST 3 program. And one of those includes a study looking at the east-west connections across the lake. So this would be including, looking all the way from 522, you know, potentially across the lake somewhere in the middle, and then between 520. So kind of that whole shed, there will be a study of that future high-capacity transit. This slide briefly shows the timeline for project delivery. The, the blue bars are the ST 2 projects, and the green bars are the ST 3 projects. One thing to note about this is that over this time period, we would be delivering new projects every three to five years. That said, particularly in some parts of the region with some of these large capital projects, there's been a lot of concern about the very long timeframe for delivery of some of these very large projects. And so our board has directed staff to take a really close look at that, hard look at that, and see if it may be possible, in some cases, to bring the project delivery timeframe down. So see if we can move up the timeframe for some of these projects, and we're looking at that right now. So undoubtedly, in the final plan that the board adopts in June, there will be changes, including the delivery timeframe for some of these projects. And then funding. This highlights the funding in terms of what the tax increase would be for the typical adult in the region. It would be an increase of about $200 a year. So the board's right now going through developing a, its financial plan for the ST 3 program, as well as looking at some of the policy issues, such as access, transit-oriented development, sustainability, and so forth. And then what's next? So again, we just, we've just completed our public outreach period. We've gotten a tremendous amount of interest. We're sorting through it all. We're digesting it, and over the next month, we'll, we've already begun sharing some of the input we've received with the board and the public. We had a tremendous response in the online survey that we had. As mentioned previously, we are revisiting, taking a really close look at project delivery timeframes, developing the financial plan, and looking at a number of policy issues. We do expect that the board will adopt a final system plan in June, and then it will go out to the voters to decide if, what they think of it in November. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Councilmember Herbig?
First off, I just want to say, I think it's a, overall, it's a huge step in my direction, and it was very exciting to see our projects included in the, in the project list. And a couple of minor questions, though. I was curious, you showed the map of the, that showed the 522 BRT and how it was going to run. And I was wondering if I was reading the map correctly, is there no direct connection between 522 BRT and future 405 BRT?
Yeah, if you go back to that. So do you see right, or just a little bit east of Bothell, there's a little line that has an arrow. So there would be, there's, the BRT line will have a station right at that point, and the service going to Woodinville would enable a transfer from the BRT line along 405 to the, the 522 BRT line. So that, it would require a transfer, but there would be a connection to the BRT line on 405, as well as the light rail on 145th and I-5.
Super. And then I'm curious, I don't know how much you guys have talked about this, but what is Sound Transit envisioned BRT looking like? Are you talking off-board payment, or are there other sort of efficiencies that you invented? Because, you know, Metro's done theirs, and Community Transit's done some of theirs. What does Sound Transit BRT look like?
Yeah, I mean, this will be the first time that we're coming out with true BRT. We are assuming off-board fare payments and more rider information at the stations. But, you know, we are not at a point yet where we've, we've ordered the buses for this or even really designed the station. So all of that will, you know, be worked out over the, over the next several years. And again, this is, this will be one of the first projects going out, so we will be getting on it right away if it's approved by voters.
Can I add to that, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I think realistically, in this project that's being proposed, there will actually be some segments that won't have exclusive BRT lanes. Is that correct?
Yes, specifically through downtown Bothell when we get off of 522.
Yeah.
It will not, actually, and then the whole, the whole section where we just add service between UW-Bothell and Woodinville, no capital improvement. So there, at this point, there aren't any bus priority treatments that are added as part of this project. And then along 145th, there will be essentially queue jumps to help buses get through it, but not the entire length of 145th.
So notice that she did not mention Kenmore as a segment that's lacking bus-only lanes.
Yes.
So I think Kenmore's done a great job, long before my time, of setting the table and putting the necessary infrastructure in place to get bus-only lanes installed. So hats off to my predecessors.
Councilmember Danuski?
Thank you once again for listening to the needs of the north end of Lake Washington. For, you said you got, the board's looking at timing.
Yes.
As you're looking at that, for the BRT portion of it, the closer we could get that to the opening of the 145th station, the better, something to think about.
Yeah, absolutely. We've, we've definitely heard that, I mean, it would make sense for us to operate the service as well, to have it open up at the same time as a light rail project opens. So we are having conversations about that, and we'll probably want to have conversations with the, all the jurisdictions to talk about how can we, how can we work together to try to help this, these projects open up so that on day one, I mean, that would be the ideal, day one, that light rail opens at 145th, your BRT is ready to go too, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to add, I've heard your new executive talk about one of the ways of moving timelines up, and that is working very closely with jurisdictions early. So we're in alignment over what the projects are going to look like. That'll make the environmental processes faster. That'll make getting the real estate happen faster. So as much coordination, talking, and agreement upfront with cities like ours, well, I think will pay dividends as far as delivery schedule. I agree with that.
Great.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for coming this evening and for the presentation. I have a question regarding your slide on the costs, and two things. Is there, one, is there a particular place that citizens can go to to figure out what the assumptions were made on those costs, on the estimate? Because I see it says $200 per year, and I wanted to know where the, just what the assumptions were made. And then also, is that $200 per year, per person or per household?
The $200 per year is per typical adult, so.
So it'd be $400 a year then for a typical family household?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm trying to think, I may need to get back to you on a good document that, I mean, we have information on our soundtransit3.org website that does detail kind of the funding assumptions. I'm not sure if it'll quite answer. You wanted a kind of a breakdown of what $200.
Well, it's, I mean, when you're talking about a $50 billion project, I mean, it's a, it's about as ambitious as anything's ever been done in, in this region. And I think it's reasonable that there's, we have the highest level of transparency so people can be really educated on exactly understanding. I think there's a lot of great things in the project. I just want to make sure that, you know, they're reasonable assumptions for people to make an educated decision.
Yeah. How about if I, I'll send a link to Chris, and she can send it around to the group of, and we'll see if that kind of shares the information that you're looking for.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? City Manager.
Well, I'd just like to publicly thank Kathy Liotta and your coworkers through this whole process. You've been so great to work with, extremely helpful. And I think we're in a happy place as far as Kenmore goes. We're grateful to be not only on the draft system plan, but an early win. And I think that makes the most sense for us to be an early win on this project, given the magnitude of BRT and going through our corridor compared to some of the other larger projects, and given the fact that we've already set the table with a lot of the infrastructure. And like Chris said, we're going to be a very eager and willing partner to work with as we go through permitting and all those things. So just my thanks to you, and to Rick Ilgenfritz, and Karen Kitces, and many others for all the time you've given us. And if you could also pass our thanks on to the Board of Directors for including us so far in the draft system plan. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
And if you have the, the opportunity to, to speak with or get a message to Fred, please tell him that we're all concerned.
Okay.
And we wish him, we wish him the best.
Thank you. I'm sure he'll appreciate that.
Thank you. If there is nothing else, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate the update.
I'm going to stay here, so thank you.
Yes, you might as well, because the next one is a presentation from Metro.
Yes.
And I tell you, you could, I'm, I'm kind of liking what I'm seeing there, so.
We'd like to, we have the city clerk pass out your pamphlets.
Sure.
Patty, do you mind if we grab those and hand those out? Do you want me to get them? Oh, they're already, oh my goodness, you're way ahead of me. Would you like me to drive?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Almost there. There we go. Actually, can I introduce you?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I am so excited that we have Paul Royball with King County Metro, and he is a project manager. And so we heard from Sound Transit first, and now we're going to hear from King County Metro. And I feel lucky, and it's been great for Kenmore to, I have been on, with Debbie Bent, she's been, we've been tag teaming, we've been on the technical advisory committee for the update of King County Metro's long-range plan. So just as this Sound Transit work has been happening in parallel with that, so has King County Metro's work. And I can say that I have seen both organizations working together. They're on each other's committees, because we all know how critical it is. If they're not lockstep and thinking together and thinking forward, we're not going to have the best transportation system. So I feel really pleased and have been happy with what I've seen as far as their coordination. So what Paul's going to talk about tonight is the King County Metro Long Range Plan Update, and I'm sure it'll be very similar as far as what they're up to and timelines. I'll say upfront that I know that they've just released their draft plan, and they're in their comment period right now. So one thing that Debbie, Rob, and I, our city team, will have to do soon is give some comments to King County Metro on this long-range plan. So I kind of view this as the first step to roll it out to you, and then we'll have to get comments in in the next couple of weeks. So with that, Paul, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, thanks, Chris. And thank you, Council and Mayor, for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure to be with you, and I'm really excited to be able to follow on the discussion we just had from Sound Transit about their system planning. Our system planning, as Chris said, is lockstep with that, intending to provide a high level of integration between the agencies and a high level of transportation system for the riding public. Over the last 18 years, we've collaborated not only with Sound Transit, but with the cities, as Chris mentioned, employers, the public, and a citizens advisory committee in developing the draft plan that we have before you today. This is our vision for, for King County Metro and how we would deliver public transportation services over the next 25 years through, so through 2040. It's a vision that, again, presents an integrated system of services for the public and seeks to knit together our fast-growing cities throughout the region. Kathy mentioned some of the growth that's occurring, and that's the same growth that we're responding to in, in developing this plan. A million more people into the region, 850,000 more jobs over the next 20, 25 years. How will we accommodate that? It'll be really important for us to provide quite a bit more service, and this plan presents 70% increase in service over that, that timeframe to about 6 million annual service hours by 2040. And what does the plan achieve? We like to think about that upfront, put that out for you to consider as we're going through some of the details of this. It achieves a doubling of transit ridership in the county. That includes metro, increases on metro services, as well as increases on Sound Transit. One of the biggest successes that we see here- One of the biggest successes that we see here is an increase in the acts, the percentage of the population that has access to a frequent transit route. Currently, only about 20% of the county's population has access to a frequent route, and under this plan, 70% of the county would have such access. That would allow them to walk or bike to a frequent service that provides 10 to 15-minute service all day throughout the day. What this would do is increase the transit mode share across the county from about 14% today to about 24% in the future. And that takes about, off about 300,000 vehicles from our region's roadways, which is going to be really important in accommodating those additional people who are in the area. We see some increases in areas that are very important for us to, to, to provide service. Low-income and minority residents have an even higher level of access to the frequent network than the population overall. Finally, we want to provide buses at link stations frequently and reliably throughout the day. We estimate we'd have a bus at a link station every 1.5 minutes. The, the plan is comprised of different service types to meet different service needs. The three main service types are the frequent service, providing, as I said before, 10-minute service, 10 to 15-minute service throughout the day. Express service would provide point-to-point connections between major activity centers, think very much like the Sound, existing Sound Transit express bus routes. These are routes that operate all day, every day, at 15 to 30-minute frequency in both directions, so very different from the current peak hour service that Metro provides today. And then finally, local service, and this is a service that's defined very broadly. It would provide, it would, it would include both fixed route services as we have today, but also would provide alternative services, new services that we haven't even envisioned yet, things that we want to be flexible to provide, that would meet the needs of populations that are perhaps more dispersed, and have special, special riding needs. This is an illustration of what the, what the service does overall, and I'm using the Kenmore Park and Ride as an example, showing how it changes from access, how access changes from today to 2040. This graphic shows the population that is within 15, 30, 45, and 60-minute, how far you can get on transit in those timeframes. Today, it's fairly, fairly limited area. In the future, it extends much more wide, much more broadly, as a result of integration with the high-capacity services provided by Sound Transit, and the additional service provided by King County. On our website, you would be able to see additional locations like this, including the Cascade, the UW Bothell College, and other areas throughout the county. We've been listening to communities throughout the county, and some of the things we've heard from Kenmore are the need for more frequent and express services focused on the 522 corridor. We've heard that you want faster, fast transit connections between downtown Seattle via, via the 150, 45th station that my colleague from Sound Transit just described. Wanita to Kirkland is a, is an important connection to provide, and other cities that are, are served by the 520, or the 405 BRT service. We've heard that population growth and traffic is impacting reliability, not only on the 522 corridor, but along all of our region's roadways, and our plan includes some, some specific elements that would help to address that congestion. Finally, we've heard that park and rides are at capacity, and so this, this plan presents for the first time in many years, investment by King County Metro, along with Sound Transit, in increasing that access via, via vehicles, especially in the outlying areas. Go ahead, and again. Okay, so I've got just a couple of examples of routes that are included within the network, and keep in mind the network spans the entire county, and we would invite you to explore that via an online interactive map that allows you to see how each one of the routes lace out. This first example is a rapid ride service from Kenmore to Overlake via Wanita and Totem Lake. This would be implemented in the 2040 network, and would provide connections at, to the 405 BRT service at the Totem Lake Station.
And just to clarify, rapid ride is how, how frequent?
Rapid ride is 10 to 15 minutes throughout the day, including weekends, and, and is our premier bus rapid transit service that Metro currently provides. Another example is an express route that provides service from Edmonds to Redmond via Kenmore, and so remember, this is a service that operates in both directions all day long. So 15 to 30-minute service throughout the day along this important corridor.
And I'd like to point out where this map connects with the other map, is the BRT stop right by Evergreen Hospital at Totem Lake. So if you were to look at the previous map, you see that circle, the purple, and then you see that connection. So getting to that station is going to be really important for Kenmore in the future.
And thank you for pointing that out, Chris. That illustrates an important principle that we're providing, that we're using in developing this service, and that is a very well-knit connection of services. We're seeing that we can achieve the, achieve the benefits of this service most where people are able to transfer particularly between, from frequent to frequent services, and not have to wait very long, because both of those services are, are providing good service all day long. This final route is one that we just heard from Sound Transit, and that's a BRT route between, well, Kenmore and, and the North 145th Station. How will we get there? These investments, these improvements will require a significant amount of capital investment on the part of King County, and one of the things that we hope to do is address the issue of congestion along the region's arterials and major roadways. We're expecting that we would provide transit priority measures of some sort along 600 miles of, of the region's roadways. That would include things like bus lanes where possible, transit signal priority, and other ways to speed the operations of transit, like off-board fare payment where possible, especially on the bus rapid transit lines. We're looking at a range of options in order to provide, to meet the needs of a very diverse population throughout the county. We would want to provide alternative services, flexible local services where possible, and we're currently in, in planning for a couple of different alternative service provisions for the city of Kenmore. We're just getting started in the planning for that, and the outreach, developing a stakeholder plan, and gathering a stakeholder group together. But basically, we'd be focusing on alternative services, that is, more van-like services rather than fixed route services, in both the North Kenmore area and down to the Finn Hill neighborhood. In order to make this system work, we need to make it easy for people to get on and off the buses, get to the places they need to go, and so invest in a lot of different ways of achieving that. One thing is to get better information out to customers. Make sure that they understand where the next bus is, is going to be, how long it's going to be until it gets there, but use emerging technologies as well, as they're developed, to provide things like what, how much capacity there is on a specific trip that's headed your way, so you know what to expect when you get to the bus stop. We want to make it easy for people to get to transit, so investing in things like non-motorized access, working with jurisdictions to improve sidewalks, to provide bicycle facilities, parking at, bicycle parking at the major facilities. And make it accessible to all people. Our goal is to have a fleet that's 100% accessible, and stops that are 100% accessible to, as well. Making these places safe and comfortable, places where people want to, want to catch the bus, but also focusing on the larger areas, making them nodes of activity, and important areas that are celebrated and valued in each of the communities. I mentioned park and ride access, and we would be working with Sound Transit to increase park and ride access throughout the county by about 40%. We haven't identified specific park and ride investments on the Metro plan. We have instead considered where, what corridors are most important to be able to provide that sort of access. We know that with an increase in the frequent network, transit network, a lot more people have walking and bicycle access to the frequent network. So the parking access would be primarily in the outlying areas. The map shows general shaded areas along corridors where the, this parking increase might occur. It takes a lot to increase transit service by about 70%, and the level of service that we're talking about means investments across the board for, for Metro. It means a lot of capital investments, a lot of investments in people, a lot of investments in systems, and really working across our, our system to provide a robust infrastructure that would support the service hours that we've discussed here. This addition of service hours would require at least 500 additional buses on the road during the peak hours. That means we need more bases to accommodate those buses. Currently, Metro has seven bases throughout the county. They're at pretty much capacity, so when we increase our service and increase the number of buses required, we have to add more, more bases as well. We haven't yet decided where those bases might be. Again, this is a vision, and a lot of the details will follow in subsequent years as we develop implementation plans that would be supporting this long-range vision. We'll also be working with cities quite a bit, and our jurisdictional partners, in making this vision a reality. One of the important things that we hope to achieve is providing a framework that the cities can use to understand where transit service is going to be in the future, so that they can then think about how zoning occurs, how development occurs along those corridors, and where those major nodes of activity are going, are going to exist into the future. This is a 25-year vision that's looking a long ways ahead, and we don't know everything that's going to happen over that timeframe. So we're certainly going to be refining this as time goes by. Right now, it's prefaced, prefaced on two time horizons, 2025 and 2040, corresponding to ST2 and ST3. But that's a pretty broad brush stroke, and in the interim, we would be working with our partners on a, pretty much a six-year basis, is what we envision right now, to develop the detailed implementation plan supporting this. Finally, I'd like to just mention that we are in our public comment period, and I do appreciate your, your attention, and I'm looking forward to questions from you here shortly. Our, our public comment period extends to May 20th. We've already had a number of open houses and other briefings with other council members, and I'll, at this point, just pause and open it up for questions from you all.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I like the direction of the plan and the coordination with, you know, other services region-wide. What I'm struggling with, it seems like over the last two to three years, there's been cutback in routes, cutbacks in service, and I'm trying to reconcile those two very different pictures.
Yeah. Over recent years, we've had some funding, some funding issues that have required us to, to cut service, and you're very familiar with that, because, you know, the Kenmore area was hit fairly hard. We have since revised our future funding. The picture has changed because of continued sales tax growth and so forth. But I, so, so that's, you know, that, that's a, that's a difference from where we were a couple of years ago. What this plan is looking to, though, is a vision that will present the future and how much that future might cost. We're not at this point asking for, or we're not expecting a, an initiative of, of any sort to fund this at this point. We are simply presenting the vision and asking people, have we gotten it right? And if we haven't gotten it right, then we can make some adjustments, so that when we get ready to go out for a funding measure, we'll be better positioned to meet the needs of the, of the population.
Thank you.
So the plan is not fiscally constrained, and it's based on what the estimated demand is, given Puget Sound Regional Council's growth projections?
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I have a question. Thanks for the, the update on everything, and my question has to do with when you're talking about the strengthening with the partnerships with the cities. Is that mostly on just the planning end, and like creating, you know, the transportation overlays and things like that, or does that also get into financial participation?
It definitely gets into infrastructure improvements, and so, for instance, with the bus, with the frequent service and the investments we're making in transit signal priority, bus lanes and so forth, those can only happen because they, the roadways operate through specific jurisdictions. And so we want to, to work with the jurisdictions in making sure that those signal systems are, are put into place. Some of it will require investment by the, by the cities as well, as, as well as investment by, by King County.
Thank you.
So I, I have a couple of questions. Back on the sort of like heat map that you showed, yes, I'm a little confused by this, because right now, today, I can certainly get downtown from Kenmore, the Kenmore Park and Ride, in a lot less than 60 minutes. But yet, you're showing something here today that doesn't get me to Seattle, so I'm confused.
There is a, a small red dot in downtown Seattle, showing stations that you can reach on transit in a 60-minute, 60-minute timeframe. Keep in mind that these, this picture is midday, so we're just trying to be conservative with that. It also includes the amount of time that you would have to walk to the bus stop, and assumes the, the, a wait at that bus stop is half the frequency between the two routes. So you might be able to get there today if you hit it just right, but sometimes you might have to wait.
Yeah, but I mean, I know right now, today, I can, in the middle of the day, I can take Metro down to the UW campus, and get on Link, and end up on Capitol Hill, certainly within an hour's time. Yet none of that is, is really shown, so that's what's confusing me, as to why that big expanse where we can't get to within an hour.
Yeah, I, I think there might be some refinements that might be needed, and I don't have all the details on exactly how these heat maps were generated. Perhaps, Chris, you might.
I remember from one of our TAC meetings, these, this data's been around for a while, so I'm speculating that maybe those stations weren't open then, so they weren't included.
Okay. I remember when I was on RTC that, that there were some of these discussions on, on some of the data. Okay, so the other one is, if you would have gone two or three more slides after you asked for questions, which we have in our presentation on, on, in our packets, there is another heat map that, again, talks about, yeah, it's way past, it's three or four past the, the question slide. Yeah, three or four more from there. Oh, you, you end there? Okay, fine. So, okay, if you, if we don't have it, we don't have it. That'll put the end of, the other thing would be, on, what's it, 1025, the bus rapid route ride, when are you looking for implementation on that? It's going to take us from, was it Overlake into Edmonds?
That, that would be in, the, Overlake to Edmonds route is an express route, so not a bus rapid transit route.
Okay, what, there, but yeah, this wasn't, it's a rapid ride.
Okay.
That's why I was wondering when that rapid ride route would be implemented.
That would be in the 2025 to 2040 timeframe, so not in the most immediate set of future rapid ride lines that we're currently beginning to plan, but in the subsequent.
Yeah, this was route, route number 1025, from Overlake to Kenmore.
Okay.
And so that one, you're saying in, by 2025?
No, between 2025 and 2040. We haven't worked on the sequencing of all of these routes, but it would be in the subsequent to, following the 2025 timeframe.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you very much for your, for your interest.
You're welcome. Let me close this down.
All right. Next item on the agenda then is a proclamation. Next item on the agenda then is a proclamation. And I understand somebody is here from King County Housing to, to accept this proclamation after we get it read. So whereas the city of Kenmore is issuing a proclamation declaring May 16th to 22nd the Affordable Housing Week in Kenmore, or just Affordable Housing Week, period. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities of opportunity, and whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent increases in a, results in a 15% increase in homelessness in the metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in suburbs and rural areas. Whereas the 2016 one-night count found 135 people in Kenmore area sleeping outdoors without shelter in January of this year, and more than 2,000 families in Kenmore are considered housing insecure because they are spending more than half their income on rent and utilities. And whereas there was 203 students identified as homeless during the 2014, 2015 school year by North Shore School District, 22 of them unsheltered. Whereas affordable homes provide support to seniors, families, youth, veterans, and people with disabilities. And whereas the combined cost burden of housing plus transportation can be substantially reduced by locating affordable housing opportunities in proximity to transit. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas creating new permanent affordable housing helps our residents maintain community roots and encourages racial and economic diversity for generations. And whereas the Association of Washington Cities determined that human services, homelessness, and affordable housing were critical priorities for the 2016 legislative session. And whereas, united in an effort to raise public awareness, communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week efforts to inform the public of the critical need to preserve and/or increase affordable housing in our communities. And whereas the city of Kenmore endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so, recommits itself to ensuring that our community thrives with opportunity and that all people in it live with dignity in a safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor of the City of Kenmore, Washington, on behalf of the City Council proclaim the week of May 16th through 22nd, 2016, to be Affordable Housing Week in the city of Kenmore, and we urge all citizens to become involved in supporting affordable housing in our community. And Ben, thank you. I've had the pleasure of serving on the JRC, let's go down this way, serving on the JRC in Calhoun with some of the office issues and housing issues in the county. I've certainly learned a lot during that tenure on that. And I had the pleasure of touring the facility in South Park. Very refreshed. Everybody gets a chance to see what's out there, and some of the new stock that's come online. It's amazing, the quality of construction, the neighborhoods. I mean, it's really good to see that people who are making 12, 15 bucks an hour actually can live close to where they're working. So thank you for your efforts. I think we're happy to do this. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words, please?
Sure.
If you want to, or whatever, stand there. Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much, and members of the council, staff, people who came out to a city council tonight, let me just say, say thank you. My name is Ben Micht. I'm here with the Housing Development Consortium of Seattle, King County. And tonight, you are joining the county, King County, and 20 other cities that are passing proclamations declaring May 16th through 22nd as Affordable Housing Week. I know that you have just started working on some of your housing option plans and strategies, and HCC is really excited to support you in that work. I know that together, we can help you accomplish the goals for affordable housing that you've you've set for your own community, and that we can ensure that everyone has, as you said, a safe, decent, healthy, and affordable place to call home that's part of a thriving community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda then is citizen comments. This is an opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. There's a timer up there and over there. And the green light, when the green light changes to yellow, you have 30 seconds left. And when the light becomes red, you're out of time, so please try and wrap it up. All right, with that, clerk, please call the first person.
Bob Green.
Bob Green, my address is 6250 Northeast 182nd Street here in Kenmore. And I came before you two weeks ago to speak about the demolition on the 520 Bridge and came up here thinking I was going to advocate for the action that you've already taken tonight, and I'm very, very grateful for that. A lot of our neighbors are here tonight in support of that. And to encourage you that however this progresses with, in the courts or whatever, that, that we're here to support you. If you need that public support, I think if it's, if it doesn't play out the way we want it to in the, in the courts, there's always a court of public opinion, and that we as a community can help swing it our way in that case, too. So congratulations on taking that action. I know it's not easy. I don't, I know it's not cheap. But when I reviewed the, the description of the demolition, that would be 50 hours a week, and the intensity of it, I'm not sure it wouldn't affect the whole north end of the lake, that you couldn't hear this thing for two to three miles. So it's just not, not appropriate for an urban community like our own. And I was just sitting in the audience, thinking about how you've advocated for our transportation in this community, and I appreciate that so much. And, you know, and taking the defense of our community with the result of this construction. So thank you so much for your services. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, we already have a link to Light Trail, or the Light Rail. There, I combined the two. It's the Burt Gilman Trail. My son is riding at this, he, every day, he rides down to the UW, gets on the Link Light Rail. So our trail here is a link to that transit. So we want to take care of that and promote it as much as we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Dennis Mendry.
Dennis Mendry, I reside at 6410 Northeast 182nd Street. My first comment is how wonderful the downtown is beginning to look. I know it's City Council and staff that have been spending years and years to get to this place, and it's a wonderful place to see happening. The next one, of course, I was called to arms to come down and say, we don't want all that sound from the destruction of the 520 Bridge. And I'm very thankful for what the City Council has decided to do. On a slightly different angle of it, there's three large companies that have done quite well on the 520 project. And the cities that have received tax benefits and mitigation for the impact of the 520 Bridge are doing quite well. My wife read an article this morning concerning the arboretum, having almost an $8 million trail put through the arboretum, which I think will be a wonderful thing, but it's a benefit that they're receiving from the impact of the 520 Bridge. Yet Kenmore, as we all know, for the last four or five years, has battled to get something. So my thought is possibly come from a different angle and allow them, as the companies that have done quite well by having something so close as Kenmore to do this, that they might contribute freely from their profits somewhat to something that we might want in our community, to better our community. One of the ideas that's been on the plan since the beginning of Kenmore as a city is the, a pedestrian bridge across 522 to the lake. And more and more things are happening on the lake that that could be something that could happen in the future. And one of the staff members had suggested that not just a pedestrian bridge, but something a little bit wider and more gracious, that people could enjoy hanging out on it. So it might be something that in conversation and litigation and so forth, the city may be able to say, well, okay, so the citizens will be much happier if you kind of give something to the city. Last item, as many of you know, For the Love of Kenmore Seminar, a few of us happened to be at a table that came up with an idea that we are still pursuing, and that idea is, we are under contract with Calport Land to banner artistically their silos. And we met with C-Max last week, and they are very excited about doing the same thing. So that's an update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mendry, and I hope you do that because I'm giving a speech on that tomorrow. Clerk, please call the next.
John Ratliff.
Hi, I'm John Ratliff, 14925 73rd Avenue, North East, Kenmore. I've lived in Kenmore practically 30 years. I live near St. Edward's, and I'm here to ask you to withdraw your, your project to build sports fields, lighted sports fields in St. Edward's Park. I just heard about this plan a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, was never aware that it was even going on. I've been visiting that park, taking my kids there. We've hosted five transfer, exchange students from Switzerland, Germany, taken them to that park. They've loved the park. They think it's wonderful that the United States has saved all these wonderful areas because they haven't done the same thing in every place else in the country. Then I did some research. I went to what is the mission of the state park? The number one goal in the mission is the protection of the resource. Number two is to provide recreation for the citizens. I think we are violating the number one mission of our state parks if we build a lighted sports field in the middle of a state park that has been, has a history there. Yes, it was initially a Catholic place to raise priests, or not raise priests, but to train priests, a seminary. And yes, they did have a baseball field there. It was not lighted. It wasn't built during, when we had the environmental concerns that we do have today. And I just think the whole plan violates what we're, what we're planning on doing. I then went in and did some research, and I found this information. Big Finn Hill, Bothell High School, Canyon Park Junior High, Forzgrin, Inglemore High School, Kenmore Junior High, Leota Junior High, Maltby Park, four fields. I could go on and on and on and on. Those are all sports fields that we already have in our area. How many St. Edward Parks do we have in our area? When I first arrived here 30 years ago, my wife was going to grad school, we lived in the U District. I joined the Mountaineers. Where was my first hike? Didn't even know the area, St. Edward's Park. Does the Mountaineers know what we're going to do? I haven't seen any advertisement, any newsletter. I get a newsletter from Kenmore on, we're going to build sidewalks, we're going to do various things. I haven't heard anything that we're going to do this. I've talked to my friends in Kirkland who go to the park. They were, whoa, what are you doing there? So all I'm saying, reconsider. I'd really like you to withdraw your plan. Publish something to let the public know what's going on. Put it in a newsletter. Put it on your website. I haven't been able to find the real plan of what you're going to do. I Googled it. I saw an eight-year-old news report. Let the public know what's going on. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff.
Elizabeth Mooney.
Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street. Hi, I'm here for a few reasons. One, PERC withdrew their appeal of the Kenmore Air Transportation Pier, and I want to thank our city manager for sending out that email and the attachments to the council. I hope you all saw the letter that PERC wrote, and that you know that we came here to work together, that it wasn't anti-Kenmore, it was never intended to be anti-Kenmore Air, it was pro-health due to the contaminants of concern that Department of Ecology had told the city about, that are in Lake Washington, and that we felt should be made public more than it had been. So we were hoping that that news would get out to the public. But then, when we heard also from Department of Ecology that the demolition of the 520 floating bridge was coming back to where the anchors were built on the landfill, we felt that it was time to figure out which is the bigger problem. And so we're happy that we decided to withdraw. We're happy to be working within the community on positive efforts for health, public health and safety, and protection of our environment. So I want to really extend my appreciation to the council for continuing to fight against the demolition. That's great news. And I just want to echo Bob Green's comment that if you need more support, more voices, that's what we're planning to do, and hopefully we'll get more people knowing that WashDOT and KGM and Pine O'Toey and Lake Point Inc. are all still going to try to fight you guys in our city to bring in the demolition with its potential hazardous wastes and air pollution and noise pollution. We don't know what's in that bridge, but there've been years of brake lining asbestos on the deck, and if they destroyed it in Lake Point, you don't know where it's going to go, and into our lungs would be bad. And then I also want to say that we met some, some other citizens, and I met with the park fellow up at St. Edward, and, you know, I think fun and improvement of that park includes what Mr. Ratliff was talking about, which is protection of the trees and the nature and the peace and tranquility instead of loud, lighted fields.
Jack Benel.
Jack Benel, 6428 Northeast 182nd Street. I hear, I also am here to talk about the demolition of 522 being taking place at Lake Point. We live above that scenic area, and we still smell the smell coming from the facility, starting generally at 5:00 in the morning. Usually terminates by, smell's usually gone by 8:00 in the morning. So if you call somebody and ask them to come out, by the time they get out there, it's gone. So that's kind of been an ongoing issue for the last decade or two. The other is the possibility of the noise, and I guess it's not a possibility, but certainly will be a noise issue if and when that demolition happens. I personally am very grateful that the council took the action tonight. We all, our whole neighborhood, I'm sure the whole hillside, I'm sure all of Kenmore appreciates that. And when, when you generally think of a view of a lake as a bonus, we certainly do, but the bonus that we get a lot of times is smell and unsightly construction site, and if Kiwick gets its way, we'll probably get a lot of noise. So if you need any more help, I know the 182nd Street neighborhood will certainly help out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benel.
Josh Kurczinka.
Josh Krasinka?
Good evening. My name's Josh Krasinka. I am one of the neighbors here as well. Live at 6242 Northeast 182nd Street. I just want to second kind of what everyone has been saying here this evening in terms of, it is great to see the city stand up and focus on the next chapter for the lake and the lake development. I'm a relatively new resident to the area. I've lived here for about a year and a half and most recently moved from Michigan, where frankly, cities are having very different discussions than what we're having here about population growth and opportunity. And so, you know, in addition to the health and environmental concerns, certainly the only other one that I would share as well here and something that rings very true from someone who's come from Michigan is the safety concern, right? You have, when I think about how jammed 522 is on your average morning and think about adding over a thousand trucks on top of that, which is the reported number of truckloads it would take to move all of that material out of the city, you talk about a significant safety concern in both the folks on the Berg Gillman as well as just the general driving population out there. So again, to reiterate what folks are saying here this evening, you know, if you need additional public support, certainly willing to offer that along with my neighbors. The other piece that I will comment on tonight, it is fantastic to see the city working so closely with the public transit operations and different organizations within the state. I think one important thing to keep in mind as I look at the plan, the plan is how long it will take for that plan to come into fruition, is the fact that this area, twenty years from now, we are still talking about bus service at a time when companies are moving to fully automated cars and there are much more technologically advanced services. And I do have a concern that if we're still on bus in 2045, we will be left in the dust relative to many of our neighbors and peers. And investment begets investment for these types of things. With the assets that we have being in the central point where we are in terms of being a connection really to both the downtown area as well as the Redmond and Bellevue downtowns with significant employment in them, I think this city is really uniquely positioned. It's one of the reasons my wife and I chose this city to relocate into, to be that, you know, hub of infrastructure in terms of culture and development. So again, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Chet Ricketts?
Good evening. Chet Ricketts, 6268 Northeast 182nd Street. Got a great group of neighbors here and coming here to share my opposition as well to the destruction of 520 here in our city. I moved here just recently, well, not recently, a little over three years ago from Salt Lake City. Salt Lake City happens to have the most polluted air in our country. Moving here, my health has improved greatly. The last thing I want is the particles and who knows what's coming from this demolition of the bridge, the impact it could have to health, yet alone the traffic and the concerns with that. So love the opposition and the support. And again, I with the rest of my neighbors will do anything we can to help continue to support that. Positive note, I've got to say thumbs up to the Beer District. I love the, the city's openness to promoting that and look forward to the continued growth of that as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Andy Ryan?
Mayor Baker, council members, thank you very much for the great public service you've all been performing. We, I really appreciate the work that you've been doing to keep Kenmore a great place to live and to protect it.
Could you please state your name and address?
I'm sorry. I'm Andy Ryan, 6015 Northeast 190th Street, and I'm a twenty-eight-year resident of Kenmore. Thanks for your great work. Thanks for what you appear to be doing to prevent the deconstruction of SR 522. From the description that I've read of the pain that it would cause this community, I think you're really doing the right thing, and I appreciate it. I also wanted to talk about St. Edward's Park. I don't know how far the council has moved towards supporting plans for the lighted playfields there and if it's too late to say anything. But when I moved here, one of the, one of the things that attracted me most about this area was that park, the natural. It's a place that can't be replaced. It is, my wife and I have spent hours walking in the woods there, and I don't know that we will ever find another place close by quite like that park. I think that you can find lighted playfields anywhere, and I don't know of any cities that are notable for their lighted playfields. But that park is something that you'll never be able to put back once you change it. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Thank you all for your comments. Mr. Ratliff, I'm sorry that you haven't heard about the plans for the ball fields. It's been in the newspaper, and I believe city manager, it is up, plans are up on the website. I know that we had an open house here, and that was well-publicized. Can you please add?
Yeah, yeah, we, we had an open house on it a couple of months back. But I think Mr. Ratliff makes a good point, and I think we need to get that up on our website if it's not up there already.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Krasinka, on the new ST3 proposal that is coming forward, will probably be on the ballot in September, link light rail to the thirty percent design stage and study is one of the proposals in ST3. I realize it's going to take a long time to get built, not quite as long as you think, but long enough for your grandkids to enjoy it. You know, it's just, there is so much, there is so much that needs to be built and done. But we're very, very fortunate in that we are moving in the right direction. We have got a lot of support from the communities. And I think when you get away from the north-south spine, east-west spine, we're going to be the next ones that are going to get, get light rail up here. And we're looking to eventually take it to Woodinville and tie in with Bellevue. So I know it seems long, but we are moving to that, and I think we're further ahead than a lot of other communities. So I do thank you for that. And Mr. Ryan, I understand the concerns that you had on the ball fields. I think, however, if you ever saw the new technology lights, LEDs, that are highly focused where you step about five feet away from the field and it's total darkness, I think you'd be duly impressed. And any lights that did go into that field would be turned off at nine o'clock at night. So it's not anything that's going to be blaring until midnight or anything else. It would be active only for a short amount of time. But again, nothing is cast in concrete. We're still working on it. With that, next item on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance number sixteen.
Consent agenda?
Oh, excuse me, consent agenda. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Sperry? Oh, okay. Well, I saw the hand go up, and so I was, I thought maybe you had a question. All right, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance number sixteen dash zero four two zero. Update of City's Integrated Transportation Program. Mrs. Overleese, Public Works Director, and Mrs. Mint, the Community Development Director.
Good evening, council. I don't have a lot to say before you open the public hearing. It's been an interesting evening of transportation, so we're fitting right in this evening with Kenmore's long-term transportation program. So before you this evening is a public hearing to consider the implementing regulations to implement Kenmore's transportation plan. We were before you a couple of weeks ago with the proposed regulations, and you directed us to come back with an ordinance and a public hearing. So being as it was only very recently that you heard the background of the regulations, I won't go into that again. And for members of the public, those are also available online and to, and to view. So that being said, I guess we're here as a staff if you have any questions before you open the public hearing or after the public hearing before you adopt the ordinance, which certainly staff recommends that you adopt the ordinance this evening. Thank you.
So I declare the public hearing on ordinance number sixteen dash zero four two zero. An update of the City's Integrated Transportation Program to be opened. Is there anybody wishing to come forward and be heard? So, once again, anybody wishing to come forward and be heard on ordinance number sixteen dash zero four two zero? One last time, anybody wishing to be heard on the update of the City's Integrated Transportation Program? With nobody coming forward to be heard, I declare the public hearing closed. So I suppose the chair would like a motion to approve ordinance number sixteen dash zero four two zero, updating the City's Integration, Integrated Transportation Program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Six zero.
Next item on the agenda is presentation of March 2016 financial report for the city of Kenmore. Ms. Gregory, you can tell us, revenues are up, expenses are down, and that can be the report.
I have a question on that.
I bet you that's what you're going to tell us.
But you wanted to share the good news.
But the net outcome is that.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Well, revenues are up. Expenses are kind of even.
Okay.
I won't really say that they're down, but I do have a little additional information to share with you. As you know, tonight's financial report is as of the third quarter of 2016. We're well into the second year of our biennium. And in the general fund, our revenues are still very favorable with sales taxes and development revenues and franchise fees performing very well. Only the utility taxes are not keeping up with our budget projections, and they're about $150,000 behind at this point. But sales taxes are stronger than projections by about $286,000, as the top graph on page three of your report shows. And not only is this construction sales tax, but all the taxable segments, including retail, wholesale, manufacturing, and the others are looking very positive. Expenditures are tracking pretty close to the budget, although the March report doesn't really show that well. It indicates that fifty-eight percent spent of the expenditure budget, but that's misleading because, as you know, every year, the police contract charges for January, February, and March have not yet been billed or paid. So I added those costs into the year-to-date numbers, and that brings the expenditures pretty close to about sixty-four percent of the budget at this point in time. And there are some other costs impacting the general fund expenditure budgets as well, which include liability insurance costs, computer support, jail and court. These are all running a bit ahead of their budget projections, and we're going to have to keep track of those as we go into the year and look for some other areas that maybe are under-expended and will offset some of those overages. In other funds, development-related fee revenues are in very good shape, with park impact fees reaching two-hundred-and-seventy-five percent of the budget, which amounts to $631,000 so far this budget. And we've also received transportation impact fees of over $1.7 million, which is 122% of that budget. REITs performing very well at ninety-seven percent of its budget, or $1.8 million. As sidewalk and park improvement opportunities are being examined, a large portion of these revenues are being targeted to provide matching funds to leverage potential grants. In past years, I used to provide an up-to-date accounting of 522 expenditures for the various phases. Remember, phase one, stage one, phase one, stage two, stage two, phase three? I haven't done that since the West A Project got underway, but you can see that it's looking really, really awesome and nearing completion. So I thought I would just give you a little financial context for where we are this biennium. With most of the right-of-way acquisition occurring in the prior years, we have a budget of $12.5 million in this biennium period to complete right-of-way and construction. Expenditures through May have totaled just over $9 million, with half of that being reimbursed already from various grants and another $3 million or so remaining to be received. So the balance will consume about $5 million of city money when the project is complete. And in talking with Chris, the Public Works Director, this project is expected to be complete by fall. Finally, to complete tonight's report, I took a look at the state level to see what the economic and revenue outlook is as prepared by the state's chief economist. These are some of his thoughts. We can expect continued growth in the United States and in the Washington economies, but at a slightly slower pace than last year and still with low inflation. The strength of the dollar is negatively impacting Washington exports, which declined in 2015 for the first time since 2009. You've noticed that oil prices have declined dramatically, impacting our prices at the pump, but moderate growth is to be expected, and that will probably come back to a certain degree. Unemployment rates have declined, and there is also rising wage growth in Washington. Our state employment is expected to continue to grow slightly faster than the U.S., and statewide personal income will also continue to grow slightly faster than, than the national level, both of which are on an upward trend. Seattle home prices have been rising faster than prices nationally, and housing starts and home sales continue to be steady and strong. Both the U.S. and the statewide housing permits have been trending up since 2011, and the forecast for permits for Washington is expected to grow in '17 and 2018, but then level off. And on the non-residential construction, activity appears to be slowing. Job creation was very strong in the state in January, and although manufacturing is slowing nationally, it is improving in Washington. Also, new vehicle sales are growing in the U.S. and the state, with Washington setting records for new car registrations in January. Lastly, The Wall Street Journal surveys a group of more than sixty economists on more than ten major economic indicators, and they do this every month. And the survey in March placed the odds of a recession in the next twelve months at twenty percent. And that doesn't seem very high, although looking backward, in August, it was ten percent, and every month, the odds have been increasing a little bit. So that's another indicator that we will be watching closely. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. On your, on the very first graph for the property taxes, if I'm reading it correctly, it looks like it's a little bit under what the projected amount is. And I know that, you know, we all had a recent payment of property taxes, so could you address that at all?
Yes. The property taxes, as you know, are due on April and October. And when I prepare a projection, I try to match that, that spike, I guess I will say, in the revenue. Lastly, The Wall Street Journal surveys a group of more than 60 economists on more than 10 major economic indicators, and they do this every month, and the survey in March placed the odds of a recession in the next 12 months at 20 percent. And that doesn't seem very high, although, looking backward, in August it was 10 percent, and every month the odds have been increasing a little bit. So, that's another indicator that we will be watching closely. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. On your, on the very first graph for the property taxes, if I'm reading it correctly, it looks like it's a little bit under what the projected amount is, and I know that, you know, we all had a recent payment of property taxes, so could you address that at all?
Yes. The property taxes, as you know, are due on April and October, and when I prepare a projection, I try to match that spike, I guess I will say, in the revenue in those months. And sometimes I get my projection off a little bit, but our budgeted property tax revenues are actually lower than our levy was this year, so I'm confident that we will catch up, because I didn't budget enough, actually, for new construction for this year. So, our levy will bring in more dollars than we actually budgeted, and when those receipts come in, they will catch up with the projection.
That makes sense, because I thought, well, goodness, if anything, we're probably increasing because of all the construction, and so I was surprised it was just a bit under. Thank you for the clarification.
We are. Sometimes you get a little bit more in March. This year, it seemed like there was less in March, but we expect by the time the April report comes out, it'll catch up, and...
It's just a timing issue.
It's just a timing issue in a comparison to my estimates.
So, if there are no further questions or objections, we will accept the report as written. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda, staff reports.
Thank you, Your Honor. Since late last summer, we've been going through the Imagine Kenmore process, where we've been asking our citizens what they'd like to see in the way of park improvements and sidewalk and bicycle transportation improvements. And I've been really pleased with how that process has been going. We've gotten a lot of really good feedback. Hundreds of citizens have participated. We've reached out through online survey, interactive online map, open houses, and other means, including statistical surveys. At the February 22nd and March 14th city council meetings, we took all of that information that we'd been collecting and came to you with a choice of three potential ballot measures that you could test in a statistical survey. And those three potential packages were sidewalks and bike lanes was one, waterfront park and other park improvements was a second, and then the third was a mixture of sidewalks and waterfront park improvements. After discussing it at the February 22nd meeting, we brought it back again at the March 14th city council meeting, and at that time, you directed us to test the third option, which we're informally calling the walkways and waterways package, and that includes sidewalks on Juanita Drive and 68th Avenue from city limit to city limit, and also waterfront improvements at Logg Boom Park, Rota Denderd Park, and Squire's Landing. So, with that direction, we did have EMC Research do a survey and asked a sample size of 300 citizens a series of questions about this type of a measure. And what we're finding is that the recent survey, this was just wrapped up a couple of weeks ago, that it is consistent with the citizen input we've received throughout the Imagine Kenmore process. The walkways and waterways proposal does appear to reflect citizen priorities, as we saw in the survey. So, because of that, we are recommending that we come forward with a resolution for the city council to consider on May 23rd, and that resolution would be for you to direct us to move forward with a ballot measure in the fall, and in particular, a bond issue for funding the walkways and waterways package. At the May 23rd meeting, we'll have additional information for you, including a nice, healthy summary of all the input that's been received so far, also the cost of a ballot measure, what the King County Elections Department is going to charge us for that, and any other information or questions you need answered between now and then, we'll be happy to provide.
Questions? Everybody in agreement with that? See a bunch is nodding. Good. Next item.
Okay. Last week, I talked to a representative of the Mountains to Sound Greenways organization, and they're looking to get a National Park Heritage designation, and they're going to want our support on that. I've invited him to come to the, I believe, the May 23rd city council meeting to give a presentation on that, and what they're doing is they're lobbying Congress and asking for that heritage area designation. The last time Congress granted one was back in 2009. I know there was a maritime area for the Puget Sound designation that was sought after, but that did not materialize. The pros and cons of a national heritage area, we can have the representative from Mountains to Sound go through that when he comes on May 23rd. But Kenmore would be in that heritage area. We'd be physically located in that heritage area. And I know the mayor's going to talk about this, but I am really excited for tomorrow. Tomorrow morning, Peter Coggyama is back. He's going to be in Renton, and he's got an amazing sidekick tomorrow, and we're about to find out who that is.
All right. Comments? Reports? Initiatives? Mr. Smith?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Ms. Sperry?
Two things.
Go for it.
Well, the first was the Karen Brewery, our third brewery, and now we've heard it officially tonight, that we have a beer district. So, I went to the event with their soft opening, and they are officially opening on May 11th, she said, and I hope I'm getting their names right, but Jen and Bill, is that right? Yeah. They have done an amazing job. It is worth going to see. I mean, I never knew that you could have giant vats and pipe all the beer over the ceiling and down the thing and go like that with a tap, and they even built the tables, and so they've done a lot of the work themselves, and they really have created an excellent thing. So, it was really fun, and Ms. Ausley was there, supporting local businesses, and there were a lot of local business owners that had come, and a lot of the brewing guilds, and the other owner of the 192, they're all just kind of enjoying it. So, it was really, it was really fun. I was really glad I got to go, and my husband really liked it. The second item is Kenmore Library. It's going to be five years old on July 9th. I know that happened in about a minute. And the Friends of the Library, which is a separate group from the Library Advisory Board, they do fundraising through book sales, so they're going to spend some of that money and put on a great party. So, July 9th on Saturday, five years. And also, the library wants to be involved if we do any kind of a ground or an opening for a pavilion building, because they would really like to maybe bring in some kind of a, you know, children's entertainer. There was some names mentioned, Casper Baby Pants or something like that. Anyway, evidently, it's very popular, and it's way too big of a deal for their library, so, but I just want to let you know, throw that out. That's all.
Thank you. Dr. Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Danuski?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Herbig?
Well, I would say that I missed you all last in Disneyland, but that wouldn't quite be true. And I, the one thing I was bummed out about was missing the soft opening at Karen, because that, I will be making a stop there Wednesday on my way home, just to poke in for half a second before I pick up my kids, so looking forward to it. I'm excited.
Yeah, I have been working on the launch boat for the canoe and kayak club, and so that night, I had to go out with launch boat and follow the rowers around in the new four sweeps that they have. And so, I got to go up and down the river with a bunch of beginning paddlers, and so I did get to the opening, but I didn't get there till eight o'clock. Fortunately, they're open till nine, so I, too, got to see that amazing facility. It's really nice, and it is something I'm looking forward to going to. I mean, that's really great. I mean, I love 192. 192 is my favorite. But I tell you what, they got a dark beer in Nine Yards that is just outstanding, and Nine Yards built all of his tables, too. The owner did really, really great job. And now Karen. I mean, I tried one of Karen's dark brews, and it's really pretty good, so I'm looking forward to this. Ms. Ausley?
If I might, Your Honor, I heard today from Bill Boyd at Karen Brewing that they have named their IPA after a Kenmore icon, Seaplane IPA. Isn't that cool?
There you go. So, last Saturday, they had the opening event for the mural. My wife actually went down there and helped them do some of the tracing on the first four planals, and she was there till midnight. They had the barbecue at St. Vincent de Paul. Turned out to be pretty good. Friday night is going to be the banquet at Inglewood, where they're going to have an art auction. And it was, it was a pretty well-attended event. It was really good. Yeah, tomorrow morning, Peter Coggyama's asked me to speak, so I am going to give a 10-minute or so speech about what's happened here in Kenmore since we encountered Peter and what our community is doing, and I'm really looking forward to it. Got to remember, remind you, Friday, Saturday, fly-in. Seaplanes are going to be coming in from all over the region. There's going to be food, there's going to be activities, there's going to be things for the kids. You're going to be able to take seaplane rides and tours, tours of the property and what Kenmore Air actually does. And Kenmore Air is really very, very widely known and well-respected throughout the world, and they are going to be receiving about 57 airplanes from China that will be fitted with new pontoons that Kenmore Air has developed and manufactured here in the United States. They've taken this manufacturing back from China, and they're now manufacturing it here using carbon fiber technology that Boeing uses on their airplanes. So, we're all pretty excited. That's 57 airplanes, and I believe it's $4 million a set of pontoons per plane, if I'm not mistaken. And I guess my question is, do we get sales tax revenue? Well, their planes are coming here, they're getting fitted here, and they're going to be delivered here. This is not like Boeing, who delivers up in Vancouver. Then, the weekend after that, we've got a Redmond to Kenmore Hand-Powered Watercraft Race, and that's 12.4 miles, and anything that's powered by hand is welcome in the race. So, we've got a number of canoe and kayakers that are going to be in the race. I think we're going to try to get a dragon boat or two in the race. Stand-up paddle boards will be in the race, and I think there's a couple of people that are actually going to go down in a kayak but pull an inner tube behind them that is filled with some substances that they can, they can drink and sip on the way down. So, it's going to be a fun day, and there's going to be a $50 first prize for winners, and so it's going to be fun. I know there's some minor problems with the surface tablets. I've been fortunate enough to have been using mine since last September, and I am really more than happy to come by anybody's house, the city hall, the coffee shop, wherever you want to meet. I'm happy to work with you and teach you draw board. It is really a great markup program for PDF files.
Dr. Baker does house calls.
And I really, and I really will. I'm more than happy to. You just got to ask. I was at Stacy's house and helped her for a little bit on Mother's Day, but truly, I am more than happy to come by as many times as you need me to. So, just holler, and I will do it. I've got a meeting with the EPA in DC on Thursday, a number of legislators on Wednesday, and so we will be promoting Kenmore. We'll be talking about Kenmore issues. We will be talking about sidewalks, we'll be talking about boating, and we'll be talking about landfill reclamation and what we can conceivably do, and start on some ideas and moving toward the future. So, with that... Your Honor? Nothing else?
Just one more thing. No one-on-ones this week, is that okay? All right.
That's great.
Yeah. And, hey, just really quick, Inglemore High School's going to be participating in some track and field events this week. It's called the Kinko Championships. Kinko is our athletic league that we're involved with. We've got this kid named Nick Lackenall. Right now, he has the fastest time in the state in the 1,600-meter race, which is the mile, so he's got a good chance of winning state in the mile this year, so, pretty cool.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.